When you call our meeting to order? Uh, would our students lead us in the pledge please? We have approval uh of the motion to approve the minutes for September tenth, twenty twenty meeting. It's going to involve the primary school, elementary, kindergarten, and high school. Many votes. James, say, say. Uh, public communications, Mr. Canelli?
Just checking, Mr. Scott.
Okay, so if you should get some as the meeting goes on, please let me know and we'll come back to you. Thank you. Communications, Department of Education. Uh, I'm sorry, I think Dave is using something. So, as a Latino representative in this town, I feel it's important to bring forth this recognition as we talk about the social justice act equity. Hispanic heritage month is a time to reflect on the influence and achievements of Hispanic Americans. Hispanic Latino culture is not only molded into the fabric of our country, but more importantly, of our community. Many of our students in Southern can identify as Hispanics or Latinx. So let's take time to honor their contributions to the Southern community's causes. I look forward to working with our administration and our educators to bring forth speakers and activities next year to bring forth education in more Hispanic, proletarian experiences for all our students. Thank you, David, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rafferty?
Uh, thank you very much. Our change. Uh, I want to congratulate all retiring staff members and both special people in the honor of teaching of the year, our official leader. A lot of people are watching. On the joy of retirement, it's important that most would like to make a special mention of teachers of years, Jason. Terry and I taught for many years with our professional teams, which is a special word. And stays these terms are making this one. Anything else Jason here is much more successful than that. She knows that actually maybe the larger part of the exchange is what she was showing. Also sad that we cannot celebrate each other's lives. Someone expressed what was important to us, we could not see it very much. We were taking it back. Also retiring. And special for our members. We also have a shared quality of example, something sad. Something that's something that. Also I believe they say visiting some schools and asking for this is so impressive. It's really just so amazing. It's a very special person. Except for math, it's a bit disgusting. Elementary sort of for operations. Everyone will really have it. Maybe discover the secrets of it, it's almost. Quietly. And the teachers, they expressed that they were purpose adverse and at least they had a little help. They were at one point, they were like that. Happy to be having success. If they were a virtual solution, sure, it was the best decision. Where is it? There's a lot of them, they go, there's a way that's wrong. Teachers trying to teach them. So it's a class. It's all at the same time. Since. The high school remains one challenge. Life is often sad there. Triple. It's the everything. The best they possibly can to keep things safe. Teachers are challenged by extension teachers that is alive. All of those are the same time. That's the best. Might be flattering any board members. Next time, if you're like. Last creation. It's a nice. It's a nice. It's a nice. Fresh. Fresh.
Thank you, Mark, just to add to what you said, uh, we do plan on um eventually having more celebration. That was what you said. So that the administration. Make that happen. So thank you. Any other board members? Thank you. Um, no, I got where Mr. Brown left. I'm like this day, I'm not gonna be able to be in this school as well. And that belong to me, it's a right. It's made of me and they. And just like. Just like every teacher saw, every secretary of ministry, a candidate, they just made them. Absolutely. Every kind of this is awesome. It's terrific, I'm sorry. They can get the secretaries and the changes on the fly, the amount of phone calls that they were receiving. I can't properly make it, I can't say it. This is the idea, you know, and everyone. You know, our education is the most important. Of course, it's something that they work as well, daunting. The other thing I wanted to add was steps we met, I never pretended we were ever steps. We are moving forward and we're very grateful for that. Mark Fuller is the new president for this year, so I want to mention that. President of this year. I also wanted to mention that we went fully online with the asset building. So that we went forward, if you have any questions concerning how the asset building is going forward, it's fully online for the train. So they're not stopping for this. Which is wonderful and um I don't know if you know, uh, well, four years ago, we started a packet for the liquor stickers. Remember that? They create these liquor stickers, so they summon ten steps as the packet for the liquor stickers. It's held now at Yak. Now stands a lot of it's her Yak industry, so I don't know if you guys know it, but it's Yak industry. So we are now in Southern selling liquor stickers. Our business. Held with the family, the liquor captain saying, and any seal is rolling behind their youth, they're known. Cause they have a sticker over the cap of the bottle, and if it's twisted and busted, you're busted. You know, so it's a, it's a really cool thing, you know? Um, so thank you for steps and your initiative and keep going forward. And my last thing is I want to recognize two young people, my second half as assistant director at Red for Life. How they kept going on throughout the pandemic. There's one woman, by the young lady by the name of Emily Holmes. She was picking masks and selling them. For her life. She raised over eight hundred dollars. Making masks for the people. Selling them. And then there's another young lady, um Avery Morgan, who was a cookie sale person. Now I said towards maybe call Shane, because I don't know, we're so unique. Which means nine hundred dollars and fresh looking for a homemade cookie. To make sure that Red for Life is serving her fellow students in need, which knew that Red for Life did the summer meeting. So I just wanted to acknowledge those Southern students and what they have done throughout the pandemic. Hold the line, we can be active. Jesusy, please, thank you for us. Thank you for such a great board, thank you very much. Any other board members? Now, moving on to communications of the administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. We have a few items. Uh, the first I want to do, follow up Mr. John Muske, he has a lot of work. He's a working person, which is nice. So I'm sure he wants to. He's a researcher. And he's a pilot. He's a pilot. He's a zodiac. There are zoning regulations that have to be done. It wasn't quite sure. He believes they are part of the answers. Which is, which is nice. Yes, yes. It's very probably. It's a. But yes, we're. That's why I'm sure. Fourth, our second item, this is to tell. It's a good thing.
So I just wanted to update you that the last meeting is here that we were talking about some secret options. And all of our meetings were very. Had um last week, we had set up, I've shared. How to. Like. To be able to be able to be able to be able to. We needed time to handle this all along. We were trying to be useful and we saw that trying to convenient service staff to grab this lunch at the time, we didn't have the meals. So we heard in uh that, made that change, we announced that this week, um it's past Monday. Begin serving from um five to six in the evening, that's a couple of schools. And it really wasn't a huge success. Went from serving last Friday, a hundred and ninety six meals. Um, and that was just for one day. Now we're doing meetings, Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, you know, two days of meals. If we had doubled last Fridays, we would have given out a little bit of ninety two meals. We began on Monday, we did six sixty four. And on Wednesday, we did seven hundred and sixty. So it's been very well received changing the hours to early evening. And uh Friday night will actually be serving meals for three days. We'll give meals on Saturday, Sunday. So um very. That's really absolutely wonderful. And before people want to be trying to grow them back. I keep monitoring the numbers and the nature of the shooting team right now. Very. A wonderful thing for our students and our community and it's wonderful. Questions for board members on that? Uh, Mr. Canelli?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Carter. Just a general feedback. I've got so much positive feedback. Very. Staff members, parents, receives some very, very, very. Recent. So. Parents. It's very complimentary of the staff. Just think it's been, it's been very positive experience so far. It's a good. We don't know if it's. If it's a positive feedback, all kinds of feedback. It's. 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 The last item that we have. In terms of Mr. John, Mr. Danson. We're updating for his case of social services. Yeah, just a quick update on a project that was started this week and really was. About uh for us, heard about this on State International. Uh, equity and access for families during the pandemic. So one of the goals of the organization is to primary and foster, whatever speaking. But all of that's equity, there's access. And so one of the things that impressed us is that some of our families have. But it's not like to be fairly logical. There are a lot of families that are without access, you know? And um so we don't always know the people, coupled with the fact that many families know that we're in it for orders. So they get nervous that if there's needs, is that what they need to do? Like when you're saying, it's exposed as a family, so they. When it's not actually true. The need is very difficult to use. And the last thing, the documentation, which is something that's. There is issues relative to their status. So one of the things that the board is trying to create is creating a network of people. They will have. Their. Or they will ask for the services, the society agencies, of the local service providers. That they can go to the elderly, after they. So if there are needs, they can hear. To support those needs, we're trying to create some plans to give information here. I also thought it was very good to be some. Uh, here. So. Like we need. Some responsibility. All families need. Something that's. Or. That's. Lies. So. Just trying to create this. What I would call. So it's in very initial. But if this takes a turn in. Or. I. Or. So. There's some organizations that are. And. We're the outreach. Today. Sometimes people just. So. We're. We got all together. So. There's. Have.
Well, thank you and keep up the great work. Certainly, our meeting will be a feedback. I'm also very grateful. Feedback on school opening. Really a pleasure to hear um Mr. Brown at the school. Missing much of the school. Students were told this last week how hard all the administrators are working. But also importantly, I think this, when I hear telling how happy the children are to be in school, to see their teachers. Yeah, there's gonna be glitches and there's gonna be bumps in the road, but we'll get through them. And we have a great team here in Southern and I am very, very proud of everything that's going on, so thank you. Um, continuing on. Communication, Department of Education, and I would like to um introduce our newest student of the night. I'm gonna try to say your name correctly. It's Jill, Jill Lisa. So. Now remember, you are allowed to say anything you want about Mr. Happy. Because you can't do anything about it, so. Uh, so I don't know if you're gonna go first or. Whatever. So.
Hi, everybody. Uh, in here. Oh, yes. My name is. I am a junior. Um, I. Um, around here and I also.
Welcome.
Yeah, so um. Like we, we, we had a, we had a little sample pair earlier, so sorry about that. So um first things first, obviously, we were at a. Basically. Me at least, I would say, many of my classmates, he was very. I would. Um, he is. Kind of all big sources. And scientists are right, idiots. So transition where most of these things. That also adds. Has to do with. Later. Other meetings have a one point. Twice. Student twice ratio. It makes everything. Especially. That's. That's. Wait. Is your meeting? Right there.
Um, so I'm not that. First of all, I have a link. When you're all of course, all of them. And of course, that's my point. I think that's. I'm comfortable. Well, it's. That. Um, but I felt better myself when. I think that. Um, I am. I. 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 I think. Well, I don't know. I always. Sorry. Sorry. But as far as I'm. It's. It's. Last. Is.
One thing which is. I'm up to reverse there financially and I, I, I went to it last year and it's. Um. And this is. Now. Right now. We have. When I went to it last year, I'm very well, the speakers that were there. Super. I have pictures still on my phone. Instead of like fulfilling your requirements and stuff, they're actually in. Other. Certain things that. Resources are available to. That's. That. I love, so I, I highly recommend that all students go to that. In case there are people that are watching, but um I, I highly recommend that all students go to that, so it's a great. The last thing is the about free lunch order and breakfast order. Um, from what I've seen, there is. Even that was a great, I was super. And. And. That was. Big. Like I said, there's. Secret.
We're making adjustments. Right? Um, you know, each day. Um, you have to. Have patience. Down and then back up, right? All right. Happy to be there. Right? Thank you so much. Well. You have something?
I'm sorry, I. I invite the busy retired, why invite the lost for the leaders? And last week, there's like. Just. Yes. If you see. If I disappear or. Uh, I think. Um. There were two minutes. Students. Which. Which.
Anyone else?
So. You're. Or me? Which. Situation. Was that. Position?
I don't know if anyone's listening. If I actually have a group that is. Waiting for it to happen. Um, I can get back to that. Or. Again, it happens. Um, and I also got that like. For things that happen. And I have the, what the fix is like. I wonder if you would.
Yeah. I do. So. Okay. Pretty. Which.
Thank you. Thank you. No, okay, just a quick. Your upper classes. You guys are. Being very. Safe. Be ready to be capable of. That horrible matter that we're running. So if you guys have a challenge. The ability to. Those. And it's gonna be better. They focus on the end and not just the. So you know what? Sure. Not. So. What is nice? Anyone else? I'm coming right along. We have um. Why does we have less? Why do we have? This? Right? Here. Special. Yes. 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 Right. Right. Now. Three years. Right. Six. 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 It's. He. And definitely it's supposed to. Initial. To. Be reasonable. Six. Six. So. So the. Language did not give. They made all of the charges last year, which was not. Said that they were. In um this extension. Want to charge. Laughing. All utilities. Air conditioning, water, sewer, trash, everything. In the condition to there. Right. Right. So. Yep. Most. And. At. CBI. Next. So. Just. Like. Your. So. Is that gonna? Um. Question state? Um. I have this. Quite, there's a number of. Quite. I can get that. It's not. Actually. I'm sure I've been there ten months. Since you've been there, get that information. Share how these students. And I believe we're. Of course. I asked that question. Like. Okay, that's fine, I'm just like. Um, we have motion. Second now, we have to. Sorry, left. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Same. Which. Um, to get. So, um, last year they had. It's very different than. There is different spaces. There is students and so. So. So they have different areas where kids are actually learning um different skills depending on the levels. They may start with um just teaching. And.
The person that we just hired recently came from a district, North Haven, where I worked for ten years and actually helped build that program.
Right.
And our pro- you know, she is, she's told me half a dozen times already, our program, hands down, is way beyond anything that wa- that was, uh, was created in North Haven.
So, uh, they are students until age twenty-one, is that correct, Mr. Cannelon?
Yes, no, a- again, based on individual student needs.
Right.
Right, but students who you are obligated, uh, actually there's a new ruling through age twenty-one to age twenty-two now. Um, so some students, uh, some students do leave us at age eighteen, or they leave us after one year at age nineteen, but many times we have students all the way through age twenty-one, correct?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Missy, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to some things. I just happened to have a conference call today with Jess Munson, not her name, so Jess, forgive me if you're listening, it's an Italian last name, can't remember it. But she's director of the transition program, not just for the high school age, it's going to go down to middle school and so forth. We talked for over an hour because one of the things that over the last four years we've been able to do at Bread for Life is take a couple of these students every semester from the stellar program and give them work, you know, I was able to give them connections to different places like Homewood Suites where they have jobs right now. So the Floridian property, Mr. Dernowski, is a great place for meeting for the bus to come in and transition, for drop off and pickup. It's really a perfect avenue and I, and when you go upstairs, so it's a really great layout on the Floridian layout where each student, if they are not outside working, like as in a Homewood Suites or Bread for Life or one of the local restaurants, they are learning the skills inside and those rooms are conducive to their needs and they're separate. So, you know, it wouldn't be like five students on top of each other, they have the independence with theirs, with their staff to really master that skill. And that's what that property offers, I just want to let you know, I've been part of the stellar program and working for a few years and I really love the program, I want to be part of the team going forward. But that layout on the floor is beautiful and the price is worth it.
Thank you, Missy. Uh, Mr. Dernowski?
Just one, one last thing, uh, at, at your convenience, I was wondering, could I get the total cost of what this program is with, with staff, with, uh, other outside costs? With, uh, you know, the leasing and utilities and whatnot?
Sure, be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So, we did have, uh, a motion and a second, correct? So, I can take a vote on that? Yes, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain, okay, thank you.
All right, the next item, uh, we talked about, Mrs. Mellett gave us an update on the food service program. Back at our May meeting, uh, and, and we got some information that we brought back to the board that the program was running at a significant loss at that time and may need some financial assistance from the board to keep going, up till all the issues that are going on this year. That was a self-sustaining program through purchases and some, some grant money, but i- is running at a, at a deficit. For fiscal year ending June thirtieth, the program's income statement showed a loss of about three hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. And we did receive, as, as, uh, Mrs. Danello said, some, that, that the seamless summer option to cover free meals during the shutdown and we did receive some federal funds for the food, but we still had to pay the staff, which continued to add to the growing deficit that we, that we had. In the end, the program was showing a final cash balance, uh, less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars excluding the student prepaid balances. And that's creating a cash flow issue for the fall coming up for both, um, salaries of paying of the staff as well as the food expenses. So, this coupled with the smaller number of students that are in school, uh, getting meals, uh, makes the deficit even worse. So, after a lot of discussion at the meeting, the committee agreed that the program, as we talked about before, is gonna need some cash to stay afloat. Uh, we'd like to make a loan payment to the program out of our non-lapsing account to do this. Estimate is about two hundred thousand dollars, but the number isn't firm yet, that's gonna have to continue to be firmed up with the payroll and food estimates. And once that's finalized, that number's gonna be put down, so at our October eighth meeting, uh, the staff is gonna, or the administration's gonna come to us with some programs that are gonna go into request for the non-lapsing funds that the board will talk about, and once approved is gonna go to the Board of Finance for, uh, proposed action. So, there's no action needed on this item at this point, it's just, it's a, it's gonna be a big issue that we need to talk about, we need to make sure that the food service program continues to stay solvent and float and is gonna come up at our next, uh, October eighth, yeah, our next meeting.
Well, you, but let me ask a question. Um, we ha- we have to pay this, obviously, so.
So, we, as, as Mr. O'Shannon said, we currently have a balance that we started off the year as a two hundred fifty thousand dollar balance. The main concern that we have is we need to meet payroll every two weeks and obviously pay for the food deliveries. The way the reimbursement works for these free meals is we will not see the first reimb- reimbursement check until November, which means we'll have the full month of September and October overhead and expenses prior to getting any reimbursement at all. Um, and that's why we're going to need an infl- I mean, we're going to need influx of cash flow for that and we really can't tell you yet whether or not we will be able to run this program at a, you know, profit or loss until we truly see what the participation numbers are. So if I can just add one thing, 'cause I think there's some misinformation in the community about the free meals. Um, there are people who think that by allowing their kids to participate, that they're taking advantage of a program that they don't need. That, you know, I shouldn't allow my student to have a free meal because I can afford to pay for the meal. But what I wanna make sure people understand is our ability to sell the meal has now been taken away from us. So we cannot sell the meal. So we either have the opportunity to take advantage of
I see.
the funding that from this program and increase our participation to cover the overhead, or instead of using federal dollars to help sustain the program, it will be our local tax dollars that we're going to need to inject into this program to subsidize it. So I think that's the message I really wanna get out to the community, is that you're not taking advantage of something that you don't need. You're actually helping us in this program right now because we are required to serve food every day to students. We're required to su- serve food to those that are remote and we have that overhead. Um, and so their participation actually will help us to keep this program sustainable, so we'll have it running again next year.
Right, so that's the message that we certainly must get across to the Board of Finance when we answer the funds, correct? I mean.
Yes, so we'll include our, um, our reopening costs as well as this influx that we're projecting, that we're, um, the recommendation for the loan, as well as some capital products. So we plan to bring you a draft listing of items at the October eighth meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions, discussion, Bob?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, so we use the word loan, so we are anticipating getting back and we can't tell the number yet, but.
So, in speaking with the, um, state, the Department of Child Nutrition, you have options. You can give them the money and not request any repayment. However, if you would like to be repaid, you have to stipulate that at the time that you give them the money. So the thought process we had is that we might design something where they would only pay back the money if they were to finish the year end at a profit and maybe the profit would have to exceed a certain dollar amount. So for example, if they had a profit of more than twenty thousand dollars, any money above that profit would have to be turned back
Right.
over to pay back the loan, some- we could set something up that sounds like that.
Not a full repayment.
Well, so we will have an update, when did you say?
October eighth.
October eighth.
October, okay, thank you. Mr. Shannon, are you?
That's pretty, the last item was miscellaneous and it was very similar to what we just talked about, which is at the October eighth meeting, the, the information about the one point nine million dollar non-lapsing fund account programs is gonna be presented and talked about because it's due, I believe it's due the next day to the finance, uh, the, the, the finance director for the town
Yes.
to get ready for the upcoming Board of Finance meeting.
Correct. Their meeting's on October fourteenth, so their agenda, just like our agenda, goes out prior to that. So we wanna be able to include some information and, you know, a memo with that and then be able to speak to it at the meeting. So we wanna present it to you prior to talking to the Board of Finance about that.
All right, okay, thank you. Is that it, Mr. O'Shannon, thank you. Um, moving right along, we go to old business, town government communications, do we have anything? I don't think so.
I think we have to, we have a motion, right?
What did I miss?
No, no, that, that, we didn't make a motion on that.
No, we don't need a motion.
No, we don't need a motion.
It was more of an informative heads up for next meeting.
October eighth.
For the, uh, three-year lease?
Three-year lease?
We did that one.
We did that, we already, on the Abbey Park, we already voted on that.
Yes, we did, 'cause that's, yes.
Joe, we already voted on that?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely did, yeah.
Sorry.
James, are you with us?
Carbon dioxide, James.
James, are you with us?
Di dioxide.
James, shame on you.
He doesn't.
It was Yankees, I'd understand.
He doesn't, he doesn't, no.
Continuing, is everybody here with us? Okay.
Present.
Um, next we have an update on our school reopening. Um, Mr. Cannelon?
Sure, I, you know, I think we've already spoken about it, we really don't have much more to say at, at this point in time. Although I do wanna make one point, Mr. Brown, our principals really appreciated the feedback, the email. Mr. Brown sent an email to each of the principals that he visited and expressed basically what he said here and I, I just want you to know how much our principals really appreciated that, you know, that feedback, uh, from you, and we did as well, you know, seeing that, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, very nice note that you wrote to them, Bob, very nice. Any other, uh, board members have anything to say? Joe?
Um, so I, I just wanna follow up with the, uh, the high school situation. Um, but e- again, we, we sorta did what we had to do and, um, I'm, I'm glad that we had a plan in place. Um, some of the feedback that I was getting as far as, um, you know, again, doing the different cohorts and things like that, um, Tim and I actually had a pretty lengthy conversation about that. Everybody sort of thinks that, um, well, we have two groups at the high school and, you know, well, if one group has an issue, then the other one can still go. And I understand that that's not always the case. Um, I guess one of the concerns that I had, um, in talking with some of the parents and, um, you know, hearing from some of the teachers and things like that was, um, uh, do, can I have a number as far as how many people were quarantined from this particular event?
I can tell, yeah. We had about four hundred students or so and we had ten, ten staff members.
Okay, and, and what's, what's sort of the threshold for requiring a quarantine? 'Cause, you know, all the literature from what I have on the website, um, cross-referencing with CDC and everything, it's a, within six feet mask or no mask and fifteen minutes of.
Well, first of all, quarantines are not required.
Okay.
It's recommended, CDC, that's a recommendation from the CDC, it's a recommendation from DPH, and it's a recommendation from our local health department. Can't force someone to quarantine. The health director does have some quarantine powers, he actually has to go to court to get that.
Right.
So the recommendation is for folks to self-quarantine for safety reasons. The way we do it is that we sit down and every, every school district, every incident is completely different. We sit down with the health director, we have two-point, uh, individuals, two-point people, Kathy O'Hara, who's our nursing supervisor, Michelle Passamano, who's our personnel manager, myself, and generally the administrator, one or more administrators from the building, and we sit down and we try to determine the facts of the situation. It's driven by contact tracing first and foremost. The contact tracing part of it is actually the responsibility of the local health department and, but school districts have the information about where staff members are, about where students are, how they interact, where they, where they interact. So, you begin asking the questions about that and begin putting all that information together and then the decision comes out of that group. And quite frankly, we don't make any decision without the health director saying, yes, that's what you should do. So, there's not a single threshold, there's no magic number. Uh, and in fact, the situation that we just had at Southington High School, if this was another, well, we already had other school districts that closed down for two weeks. Every situation is different. Uh, now, we've had complaints, because we also get complaints about quarantining, so, well, you know, those are the recommendations um, about, well, my child was in the cafeteria and might have been nowhere near that student. It's about health, safety, and we're all, I'm always gonna err on the side of health and safety for students. Always, 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 we're gonna make the decision based on what's healthy and what's safe for students. We're never gonna take a chance and that's always where our health director is right now. So, tho- that's how we make the decision, it's not quite as simple as I just made it sound, it's actually really complex because, especially when you get into high school, um, you can have a, a student who has, say, fifteen classmates in seven different classes, that's an awful lot of students. And they might all be different in all those classes. You can have teachers who, everybody teaches five periods, so if we had ten staff members and they all teach five different periods, fifteen different students in their classes, you know, do, do the math, it becomes very, very complex. And there's also no way, absolutely no way you can tell whether students, a, a student in, uh, a cafeteria where everyone is sitting completely and totally unmasked is only in one place and is only, you know, X number of feet away from someone. So, it's just not easy and people, I, I understand that people think it's easy or people think it's not the right thing to do, but by and large, the only thing that we're trying to do is do everything, uh, follow all the recommendations, all of the strategies for contact tracing in an effort to keep everybody safe. And I think we did a pretty good job of it, quite frankly. Uh, I think we did a good job when it came up previously, they're all different. Um, the next time, 'cause there will be a next time, the situation will be different and we'll deal with that as it comes.
But, but I guess my, my concern is, again, going back to primary contacts and everything else. So the purpose of contact tracing is if you are within a certain distance, mask or no mask, for fifteen minutes or more, then that's considered a primary contact and, you know, my understanding was. And, you know, my understanding was in the high school, we carefully set up a plan, especially in the case of the lunchroom, where it's a large area, you know, again, I understand that kids have their masks off, but I would also assume that, you know, we do follow a certain protocol for getting kids to the lunch line. We sort of minimize the mixing of students as far as, like, you know, I don't know. Do we encourage kids to sit back in their seat? Do they, are they allowed to get up and mingle or do anything like that? My understanding is pretty.
Mr. Bicheski, let me just stop you right there. Because the purpose of contact tracing
Right.
doesn't have anything to do with the definition of a close contact. The definition of a close contact is within six feet
Right.
for 15 minutes or more. The purpose, the purpose of contact tracing is to contain the potential spread of the virus. That's the purpose of contact tracing. That's why people do contact tracing. That's exactly why they do it, in an effort to mitigate the spread of the virus.
I understand that, Mr. Canelon, but also we've now upset the situation of 400 students and teachers as far as now, now they're quarantining, so my.
Correct. For, for health and safety reasons. Let's, let's get it straight. For no other reason other than health and safety. Health and safety first. Health and safety first, always.
That's trying to prove a negative, you know, as far as like, I.
I'm not trying to prove a negative. I'm trying to tell you it's for health and safety.
But I'm not advocating to put anybody at risk or anything like that. My, my situation is essentially that now we have 400 students that, again, maybe they were exposed, maybe they weren't exposed. Do they have an option because it's considered optional? Quarantine, we suggest it. Can they come back to school if they want to?
No, they can't.
So, so it's not optional in that regard?
Quarantine, wait, quarantine, no, no, because you're mixing, you're mixing things. You're not, you're not saying what's actually true. A recommendation for self-quarantine is a recommendation for self-quarantine. Quarantine involves someone being isolated, staying in their house, staying away from other people. On the other side of that, because someone has been recommended for self-quarantine, the recommendations and guidelines from CDC, Department of Public Health, and our local health department said, you cannot test out of that. So therefore, you're not allowed back, you're certainly not allowed back in school. We can't control whether someone actually goes and stays in their house, which they should, but we can't, we can't control that, nor can we require that. But you can prevent somebody from coming back into school and endangering someone else. That's the purpose of all of that. And that's not the Southington Public Schools guidelines. Those are the guidelines for CDC, Department of Public Health, and our local health department. That's what we're following. Now, I understand, all this information has been out there for months. I said this in my most recent letter to parents. But people, it doesn't become personal until it becomes personal. But it's all been out there for months. This is not new. Quarantining, self-quarantine, the recommendations from CDC and DPH are not new. They've all been out there. But people don't really look at it from a personal point of view until it's them, their spouse, their child, or their neighbor. So folks get upset about that. So we try to do the best we can to explain it, but we're not going to do it differently. The only thing that we're going to do is look at the situation. And each situation is going to be a little different and we're going to respond appropriately. If the exact same situation occurred tomorrow, the exact same situation, we'd respond the exact same way. If the situation was different, we'd respond differently. But that's, that's how that works. And it's all about trying to keep kids and staff members safe. That's what that's about.
We're all trying to do that, Tim. Like, you know, again, like, for you to suggest that I'm saying anything other than trying to maintain safety and the health of people is, you know, again, like, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just advocating for the sense of, listen, we have all of our restaurants open downtown. People are there, but, but hear me out, though. There's inconsistency all over the board.
That's, that is not.
I'm trying to make sense of it.
That has nothing to do with what we're doing in schools.
But, but it should because we're all, this is all the same environment that we're living in. This is Southington. We're all one town.
What we're doing in schools has nothing to do with whether restaurants have 50% capacity, 75% capacity, or 25% capacity. Nothing to do with it. Nothing to do with it.
Excuse me, Mr. Canelon and Joe. I think you're missing a very important point. You're not listening.
I am listening.
Well, if you are listening, you have to understand that we are following the guidelines set by the CDC and our health director for our students at school. When you talk about a restaurant or something outside of school.
I'm using that as an example to demonstrate inconsistency.
You're not doing oranges to oranges, Joe, okay? You're not. And, and I happen to have had a grandchild that was quarantined, was, was in the, you know, got noticed that she was in whatever. We are following to the T what we feel through our administration, through our health director. What we are following, what we feel makes our children safe. And for you to question our policies, what we're doing, it really bothers me.
Why wouldn't I question it? Because, because what damage?
How can you question what the scientists are telling us?
One of those kids who relies on going to that school to sort of get out of a bad situation at their house.
They're not getting out of a past, they are going online learning.
Never know the situations of kids when they come to our school.
Your, your issue, your issue makes no sense to me, Joe.
It's the inconsistency, it's the fact that there's one individual that's making the recommendations for, for how we do. And, you know, I just don't agree with that.
Based on scientific knowledge, making that decision, based on scientific knowledge of what our protocol is. Any other board members have anything to say about that? Zaya?
And I, I know there's a lot of different opinions on this, right? And I know, you know, you've raised some issues in the past and some other people have too. I think the, I mean, there is consistency, at least my opinion. In reading all the documents, they've been out there. I mean, they've been out there for a long time. And to your point, I think you're very well right, because we experience the same thing at work. It doesn't become personal until it becomes personal. And then it's like, well, what is this? But it's been out there. I, I personally feel if we don't go this route, and I, and I get it, there are restaurants open and all that other stuff, but this is different. This is a district, this is a school district that is trying to keep the kids safe. No one's saying that you're not, you're looking at the opposite. I understand you, you're coming at it from a different perspective. But I don't agree that that's, that's opposite. And I, I think, and, and I know we've had this discussion before. I think this concept of the safety protocols are coming from the CDC, they're coming from the health director. It's not one guy, right? It's not the health director that's saying, you're going to follow all these rules and that's it. They're coming from the CDC. Now, somebody has to be point person and it's the health director. That's the point person, I'm making some of these decisions. But the, the rules and the guidance are coming from the CDC. And it's, and these rules are changing. And, and I mean, there seems to be such strangeness with the CDC right now. They come out with one thing and they come out with something different. But in the end, at least from my readings of it and what I've implemented at work, and I think what's been implemented here, it's consistent, saying if we, if we have a set of rules, we're going to follow them and we're going to keep the kids safe. I don't, I don't think saying that we shouldn't quarantine kids because, because there may be an issue at home or whatever, that do they have the right to break that quarantine and come to school? My opinion is no, because then you open up a whole can of worms of multiple people bringing in multiple things to get people safe.
So, you know, again, Zaya, I completely understand what you're saying. And I'm, I'm not advocating for anything other than essentially being able to consistently look at the situations and maybe play the Monday, Monday morning quarterback of trying to make things a little bit differently.
But I think that's happening.
But, but my, but, but just hear me out. So, so essentially, our, our concern is the health and safety of kids, right? They happen to be, and these are well documented as far as statistics and everything else, that kids are the least effective, affected by COVID-19. So, so with that, with that being said, you know, and again, it doesn't mean that they're not spreaders or anything like that. But with that being said, essentially, you know, there's so many other layers to the onion. I'm just trying to provide more of an insight from, again, talking with some of these parents, talking with some of these kids. And, you know, since this whole thing has happened, there's been so much turmoil in families and everything else. Honestly, I, I feel like schools have become sort of an outsource for some of these kids to get away from what they've had to deal with the past six months. And, and my only thing is, again, do we have to quarantine an entire cafeteria full of kids? Well, I, you know, again, like, I would like to revisit that and really try and cut into that. You know, do we have a way to be able to track better? You know, again, maybe it wasn't in place for that particular moment, but maybe we, we have a situation that we can do better for next time so that we don't have to, you know, 140-plus kids.
But the concern I have is that you've got, and I hear you saying that kids, and there's things out there, some, some people say that kids are completely immune, but they're not. The data that's coming out now seems to be that students, kids.
Young kids are getting it, right.
16 and below are now the fastest rising group of people that are getting it. And I have to assume the answer is because they're back at school. And maybe some schools aren't doing as much in terms of protecting their students as we are down south and some of the other states that let them come in and, and, you know, see people without masks. You see all this other stuff going on. But I think that, and, and the other part of it is, is, you said it, they are, they could be spreaders, right? So it's, we're not just worried about the kids, we're worried about the staff, we're worried about the parents, we're worried about the community as a whole. Where students are going to come in, if somebody gets this and brings it back in, because, you're right, the school is a refuge. It's a place for students to be able to go and feel safe. You go there, you feel safe, you're going to learn. It's an environment where it's so great that, that you're all back in, in class. You're all back in school and your friends and your counterparts are back there. But we have to be careful. We have, and I think being super careful and erring on the side of over-careful, my vote is always going to be on the side of over-caution, because I don't think we want to be in a position of saying, oh, darn it, we let that guy back in and now look what happened. If we're going to follow the rules, we got to follow the rules. If we don't follow the rules, let's just, let's just abandon them.
Dave, you had something to say?
Zaya, you know, kind of hit on everything I was going to, going to say. And the other thing is, this board isn't in a position to make a decision.
No, we are not.
It has to be, you know, the, you know, the experts in the field.
Exactly.
So. We can talk about it, we can discuss it, but there's nothing that we personally.
You're absolutely right.
Or should take the authority to change.
Mr. Canelon, I do have a question.
Something that we have to talk about.
It is not something that we have to talk about. It is something that the Board of Education has no say in. It is up to our administration, the CDC guidelines, and our health director. So I, I, you need to get that message through. The Board of Education has nothing whatsoever to say about that, okay?
So they have no oversight.
You may not agree with the policies, but I happen to sincerely believe, and I can ask the three students over here, that we are following what we believe is for the health and well-being of our students. And that is the policy that we are following. How did you, kids, I think we asked you before, or somebody asked you, how do you feel about this? Brett or Jill?
So I think the school has done a good job. We talked about this before, Mr..
You kind of did talk about it, right?
Has, we've done, at least the students have done a good job making sure everybody's at the high school. I'll preface that with, the students are wearing their masks, following the signs, the arrows on the ground, the walls.
Right.
What stairs go up and down. So I, I, I think overall the students have made a very good effort to try to keep everyone, including themselves, as safe as possible. And I was talking to Mr. Brown earlier and he said that, and he mentioned all of you that at the elementary schools, there are, of course, a few hiccups because they're, they're younger. That's understandable. But for the most part, everybody is, I think, is doing their part, which is great.
I'm personally not so sure where I stand, because obviously at school, we know that we're at school, we're at a educational building. We have to follow these rules and guidelines set. But at the same time, when we're not on school grounds, we, I don't know, like, as kids, we see what other kids are doing. And, I don't know, like, I feel like if, I mean, if it's a school building, it's a whole different story. But at home, or like if they're out with their friends, it's a whole different case. So it depends on the situation of where you're at. At school, of course, we all follow the rules. But the point I'm just stressing is that we don't know what kids outside life is.
Exactly.
So it's like different.
But while you're in school, you understand that we have to follow procedures and policies, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, from, all my peers, they all wear their masks at school. But I know some of them, as soon as they walk out that building, the mask comes right off. Like, they do not want to wear it 24/7. But I know everybody knows to wear the mask inside the school. Everybody respects that decision and I don't think anybody has a, really a problem with it, not that I've seen. And I haven't heard any teachers in my classes complaining like, hey, put your mask back on or something like that, anybody fooling around. But I think all students are taking account for their actions and how they're wearing their mask and how they're, well.
I was going to say, at, at school, they take account for it.
Yeah, at school, at school, yeah.
But my, my point being to you kids, do you feel, do you feel comfortable that our school administrators, our health director, that we are following the strict guidelines of the CDC, what they are telling when we do find out there is a COVID case? Do you feel that that is the comfortable thing and right thing to do for the health and well-being of all of our students?
I, I object. I, I don't think we should stick them in the middle. I'm sorry.
Can't ask them? Okay.
I, I just don't want to put them in the middle.
Okay.
We're happy to answer, but if you guys believe then.
I, I agree, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Mr. Canelon, can I ask a quick question? You made a great, a statement that a couple of parents have contacted me about, and I'm glad you made the statement. You said you cannot test out of this. I might have missed an email, but I'm sure you're very thorough. Was it clear that the parents, you know, a couple of parents have reached out to me and said, oh, my child was one of the 400 that were out. They went and got a COVID test, stayed in line from 9:00 to 3:00. Came back negative and they still couldn't come back in. And you made a point that I didn't know this tonight, and I hope parents are listening, that you cannot test out of the quarantine. And the quarantine is for whatever the statute, it was the two days, whatever that is. But you can't go and get a COVID test and test negative and come back.
Correct.
Is there some, you said that tonight, but is there something written? Like I said, I could have missed an email and didn't read it completely.
So it's right in the, it's right in the guidelines.
Okay.
And again, I, I understand if folks are not faced with it, they may not have read it, they may not have looked at it, they may have glanced at it, they may have just skimmed it. The guidelines have been published for quite some time. It's, it's been in the guidelines and it, it clearly says it's 14 days all the way through. And honestly, that's, that's straight from the CDC guidelines and straight from DPH. And they have hammered that home over the last months, actually.
Yeah, and I did encourage that today, that I thought that was the same thing. But why would they go out and get a testing done if that wasn't an option? So I, you know, you brought that up tonight and so thank you for saying that.
Alright, moving along, any other discussion? The last item on our.
James.
Did I miss somebody? I'm sorry, James. I'm very sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Canelon, just a quick question. So Brett mentioned earlier there was some technical issues with Google or potentially school, school infrastructure systems. Do we have any known outages that have happened since school started that have impacted remote learning to this point?
They're all over the state, quite frankly.
Okay, is that, is that our own infrastructure or is that something with Google or the DPHs?
It, it's, it's literally all over. Google has had some issues and they've seen some of the emails back and forth with the tech directors. There are just a variety of issues, Mr. Shnowski, that have come up. And I think it's because every school district is, is trying to utilize essentially the same services right now.
Right. Now, do we have any kind of like service level agreements with Google that we can leverage to get faster uptime or faster recovery?
Not really. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't quite work that way.
Okay.
In fact, you know, they respond when they respond.
Right.
We do work through the CEN, which is where we get our service from. And we actually have some services that we've brought in now through another, through another company to help us keep our network stable.
Okay, and do we, do we have a service level agreement with Google? Are we paying them for their services?
We have, we have a, we have a contract, if you will, for Google Enterprise, which is, but it's access to the platform. Google themselves don't provide the network and internet service. They're a platform.
It's the network that's gone down, not Google.
Yeah, well, there's, sometimes there's software compatibility issues with the firewall, you know. So there's, you know, they have to sometimes work through that on their end. And, and, and that's, that's part of the statewide issues that Mr. Canelon's talking about. That they don't know, if most districts are using a product like Fortinet, they don't know that their platform, if there's a mass log-on to all of the different servers that they're hosting, because it's cloud-based, are going to run into, you know, saturation points, if you will. that they're hosting, because it's cloud-based, are going to run into, you know, saturation points, if you will, right? And I'm not using tech, you're a tech person, I'm not. But that's one of the issues that they run into. Sometimes with, in our own town, you know, all of the students, there might be an outage on the street. You don't know if that's, you know, Mr. Sean has talked about that in his own neighborhood. Even in my own street this week, the internet was down. And we had some remote learners, it's like a snow day without snow, because there's no internet. And you're a hybrid, you're cohort B today, so no school for you. So I don't think it's, I, I wouldn't attribute it directly to Google. I think it could be a lot of, it could be sometimes the local internet provider. It could be the district network. It could be software compatibility issues that are, you know, working alongside the firewalls and stuff that we have in place. So it's, that's a challenge, is trying to narrow down where the source of the problem is. In our buildings, it's a lot easier, you know? It's a server, it's an access point, it's things like that that we can narrow down fairly quickly.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was trying to understand. If that was something on, you know, this particular glitch, I'm not sure how many there were so far, but was it, you know, something that was on our end? Or, you know, like you said, maybe an ISP had a, you know, a node go down in a neighborhood or something like that?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure specifically what two incidents Brett's referencing.
Okay. Okay, yep.
I could go a little more about that if you want. I just know that there was twice, I think, one in school and then one when I was out of school. The first one, it just, I think it was Google Meets just would not let anybody join. And that was for the kids who were at home that day. This was in my physics class. Then when we were in the class, Wi-Fi shut down, we had no access to internet. On the second time that I'm aware of this happened, same thing, Google Meets went down, wasn't able to log on. And I was, again, in physics class, so maybe it's physics class.
It might have been, it might have been the time of day, because one of the things that happened over the last week or so, multiple districts experienced a denial of service attacks. And they're brief, but nonetheless, they, they were disruptive. And so people were generally back up and running in a short period of time. And CEN was doing everything that it could to mitigate it on that end. And in, and in fact, our, our consultants are actually working with, with CEN right now to try to help them with that issue. So again, it's not any one thing. It's a variety of things that are, that are happening. Those denial of service attacks were pretty disruptive. And, I mean, it wasn't just us, again, there were multiple, multiple districts. Seeing the emails, threads that come from the tech directors across the state, it was, it was basically everyone complaining about it.
You were saying that about your district.
Yeah, I actually had a question that just popped in my
Okay, I think I had someone first. I apologize.
So, back to the Google Meets. Myself and Mr. Medancy, we had a quick conversation prior to the meeting. I just wanted to know how secure the Google Meet links were. Where I work, I know we've had some issues where students were sharing the links on Twitter to their friends. So students would just, random students and their friends would just go on to Google Meets and basically Google Meet bombed the class. So I just wanted to know if there were any issues that you know of within the district and concerns to that.
None that have been reported to me.
Uh-huh, that's good.
But did we just give everybody an idea?
No, they're already doing it.
No, it's our, they're in the Southington. For point of clarification, it's, it's the Southington domain. So all of our students have a Southington domain email address.
So they can't log in from their personal email or
That is correct.
advice or anything.
Mr. Shan, have you had a
Yeah, so I, talking about the IT stuff, I know that the guy that came to my neighborhood multiple times said the weather has a lot to do with it, especially when it's hot. They, they do all that stuff. But speaking of weather, and speaking of the ability to have remote learning, and talking about school reopening and planning and stuff, because it's 2020, and I don't know, I mean, I don't know how quickly locusts pile up when they start coming down in the sky. But what happens when it snows? Is there going to be a snow day this year?
So funny you should ask.
Oh, no.
No, I, I had this conversation with the Commissioner of Education just yesterday.
Mm-hmm, oh, good, okay.
And what they're trying, what he's trying to work through with the State Board of Education, and I have a discussion about, is that topic exactly. The, the issue has to be attendance and accountability. So we have to be able to say all of our students can log in. We take attendance and move forward with the, with the day's work. We're not in that position just yet, because our additional Chromebooks have not arrived, so we're not a fully one-to-one district. Other districts are, and they, it's literally like flipping a switch. I do believe that they'll get to that point in that, in the conversation, because a big, a big topic right now is equity, and it is about access.
Right.
And the questions that the Commissioner is being asked are around the idea of, how can you assure us that students are, are actually engaged?
Yeah.
And we have some new attendance codes now, so that when teachers are taking attendance in the, in the classroom, students in front of them are, well, the default is present. And if someone's not there, then they're obviously marked absent. But there are new codes for those students who are remote. So they're remote present, remote absent. And that's, that came directly out of the issues across the state this spring, where they were reporting that there were twenty percent of students who never logged in even one time, you know, et cetera. So that's a, that's a big issue across the state, and it is absolutely tied to the accountability factor, attendance, and can you, can you have a reasonable assurance that your students are, are actually going to be in school, even though they're, even though they're at home? So I think we will get to that point. And as a, it, it may be different for different districts. If we, I keep saying if, when are we finally do get the remainder of the shipment of our Chromebooks and we are a true one-to-one district, we will be in a position where we can say, yes, on a given day, we, we know it's going to be inclement weather, or we have a pretty good idea it's going to be inclement weather. That's when we pivot and we send the kindergartners, first graders, and second graders home with devices, and perhaps third, fourth, and fifth graders, you know, already have them, and our middle school and high school students have them. We'll, we'll just be in a much better situation to be able to do that. But that's, that's the criteria that we're going to need to meet. We're going to, we're going to need to be able to say to the state, not only can we do it, we are doing it, and we can, we can show them by our, by our attendance-taking with the students that we've done it.
And that becomes something not just now, but into the future. Once one-to-one is in place, the potential of a snow day goes away. I mean, the calendar actually will be a calendar, it's pretty consistent.
That's so terrible, though.
Yeah, all that
Got to give at least five.
Get out in May, Joe. Get out in May. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. The last item on our agenda is the ratification of the ASME Nurses Union Local thirteen oh three dash one oh four.
Move to approve the tentative agreement between the ASME Nurses Union Local thirteen oh three dash one oh four of Council Number Four and the Southington Board of Education.
Second.
Second. I have a second on that? Oh, you have a question?
I think the motion should read approving of the agreement, not the tentative agreement.
I'm sorry, what?
There is no tentative agreement.